Good evening and welcome to the September 24th City Council Work Session Meeting. Excited to be here tonight. First, on our agenda, we have our Youth Thrive Summer Program Review. I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Bo Klayton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item on today's work session will focus on reviewing the Youth Thrive Summer Program, specifically the Youth Career Program and Friday Night Nets, launched this summer to empower youth and young adults in Newport News. We will share initial findings, outcomes, and potential growth areas, as well as proposed next steps. Overall, we were pleased with the inaugural programs, which provided safe enriching opportunities for our residents. I'd like to ask Owen Miller to come up and kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good afternoon, Council. So, before turning over to my colleagues tonight, who will touch on their specific programs, I just wanted to take one moment and refresh our audience here in the room and at home about the larger Youth Thrive Initiative. The city has always been committed to providing opportunities for our residents, particularly our young residents. But this year, we stepped it up a notch. Folks may recall, as part of the state of the city, Mayor Jones designated 2024 as the Year of the Youth. And then in May, this past May, we also launched our Youth Thrive Initiative. Youth Thrive serves as an umbrella or collector for all youth-oriented programs, not only the cities, but also those of our community partners. I will now turn it over to Larry Brunson and David Freeman to provide an update on the Youth Career Program and Friday Night Nets. And then, at the very end, I'll touch very briefly on the future of Youth Thrive. Larry?
Thank you, Owen. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm glad to be here. Definitely proud to talk a little bit more about some of the outcomes that we had. Of course, I want to know that this YCP program, Youth Career Program, is modeled after your strategic plan and to help our residents gain learning experiences for work and also for employment and ongoing training. Specifically, the youth program was designed to capture our youth between the ages of 16 and 24 and give them those same advantages that we would give adults in terms of how they get to a better place in life economically. So, with that said, the YCP program offers several things: education, training, coaching, work experience, and also it just gives them opportunity to empower themselves to succeed in their life in the future. So, let's go into some highlights. With this program, it was definitely data-driven and want to share some insights with you guys today. We had a lot of engagement with this program. Out of 131 youth, 101 completed the program. And then, on top of that, the workplace training assessments, we had 94 in a 30-hour of physical training, work readiness training, all kinds of things, literacy kind of things, financial literacy, how to act in the workplace, how to combat conflict in the workplace. Out of that, 75 finished what we call Work Keys Assessment, very efficient tool that kind of allows the youth and employers to know where a person's steps in life in terms of how they can perform on work. And out of that, 31 earned the National Career Readiness Certificate. It's a portable credential that can go anywhere in our country. And the youth can show that I have the ability to have the great soft skills, some of the technical skills that might be needed in the workplace. In fact, Huntington Ingalls is a profiler, which means that if a person passes the Work Keys Assessment and gets at the lowest level, they can qualify for entry-level positions at the shipyard. And that is a requirement for a shipyard for those that have experience. So, I'm trying to give you the value of what that really is. They really achieve something great.
Excuse me, what about the other? You said 94 started and 70, how many?
Yeah, so 75.
So, what happened to the others?
So, let me repeat it again. So, 94 completed the program from beginning to end.
Okay, alright.
Out of that 94, 75 took the Work Keys Assessments. It was not mandatory, it was optional. And then, out of that, 31 received the National Career Certificates.
Okay.
And so, that is an accomplishment because young folks decided that they wanted to also be a part of the real world. And they took the extra time and effort to complete those assessments, and it was a win-win for them. In terms of career advancement, we had seven of our 18- and 24-year-olds were offered job employment after the program. Eight additional folks received scholarships for more intense training in plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. And they are attending VTA now, Virginia Technical Academy, right now. And then, we also refer seven to New Horizons. We talked about a program that's continual. This is the way we continue with our partners. And even today, we have those that were NYCP come back to Brooks Crossing for more coaching, counseling, getting employment. And then, those that were not, they still come back to Brooks Crossing. So, yes, this is a beginning phase to a program that's continual. It's not a program, it's an approach on how do we serve our youth and our residents in the city of Newport News. So, with that said, we couldn't do it alone. We had a lot of community partners, and 51 that we can name. We had Hampton Workforce Council, we had Huntington Ingalls, we had the Newport News Public School System, we had faith-based organizations like Ivy Baptist Church, we had big companies like Riverside Hospital, and we had smaller ones like Elite Services that provides, you know, mental health services on a very small scale. So, we had a spectrum of employers and community partners that worked with us in this program. I want to give you some feedback that we got. Of course, everything is, we still are trying to make decisions with our program, looking towards the future. And our youth participants, 60 responded, and this is what they said. 85% said that they improved their critical thinking skills and decision-making skills. We also had overall satisfaction for the program was 80%. Skill development, 70% increase. And 85% said they would also apply for the program next year, as I turn the slide for you guys. And then, we had a high satisfaction rate. And so, the question that was asked, are you highly satisfied? 70% said they were highly satisfied. Then, overall, contentment with the program was 80%. Also, want to give you some information from our employers. We had 51% to respond, that's a very high rate when it comes down to surveys. 79% of our employees said they were highly satisfied on how the program was administered. 85% said they were highly satisfied with our staff. 71% reported that they would be worksites next year. And then, 61% said they were very satisfied with communications. So, that left some improvement for communication because some weren't satisfied, and we'll talk about that a little bit later.
Did you ask them why?
Absolutely. So, a couple of reasons. One would be the coordination of the program itself. You have 100 youth going in and out of the employment. We had quick changes in terms of how we deliver our information to our employers. We did a lot through virtual meetings. We need to improve on that, more personal touch. And then, there was a miscommunication about placements. And they were small disappointments in that area. Overall, like I said, 80% were very satisfied with everything that we did. And of course, this is a new program, and we wanted to give you the facts. The fact of the matter is that it's a new program, and we did a great job overall. But yes, there were some things that we need to improve upon, and I will talk about that after this video. How about that?
Hi, my name is Christina Gardner. I wanted to talk about my experience at the YCP program. The first things first, they offered me a scholarship full-paid to go to trade school, took full advantage of that. And I feel like that was the best opportunity that I had ever in my life. And not only did they offer a scholarship, I will be presented a job at the end of the program. So, with that being said, I wholeheartedly recommend a whole lot of people to go through the Brooks Crossing Center.
Hi, I'm Malik Brown, and I've been sponsored by the Youth Career Program to go to school, church school, and get a full degree. And they're going to provide me with a job at the end of this. It's been a great opportunity. I've been learning new things, learning things about myself. It's been an amazing opportunity.
That's just a snapshot. One of the things I want you to remember is the fact that we reached out to the most vulnerable population. We had a wide spectrum of individuals that they were on a spectrum of disabilities, 25%. We had folks that were from high-crime areas, low-income areas. And it takes a lot to keep people engaged. We've had our coaches play a significant role, and some of our coaches are here today. Some of our Newport News residents, Troy Ketchmore and others are here. In these opportunities, even though we kept the participants engaged, we actually went to court with some of these young folks to keep them in the program and to keep them out of detention, in so much that the juvenile detention judges accepted our program as an intervention so they wouldn't have to go further in their experience in terms of a negative impact. So, yes, we made some ground with that, but it takes a lot of effort. And thankfully, we had coaches and our project managers that were caring enough to go way beyond Call of Duty in terms of how we deliver these services. We're very excited about the fact that we did complete the program very successfully. But even with that, and we're looking towards the future, there are areas of improvement. I want to kind of touch on those a little bit more. More personal coordination and communication with our worksite supervisors. Improved coordination and best-practice job coaching expectations for our coaches. And in front of you, you may have some material that was designed by our contractor. And these are tools that we use in terms of continual coaching and also as a reference point for those individuals in the program to go back to. So, we weren't just having a program. We were actually having coaching, training, ongoing throughout the whole entire process. One of the things that we discovered, too, we need to probably have parents and youth involved prior to selection. We also need to have increased presence at our work sites. And of course, the big one is transportation. We need to have more enhanced services for transportation. But overall, we're very proud of the program. We're looking towards the future. We're open for any kind of feedback that you may have in terms of what we did and what we could do better. So, thank you.
I have a quick question. You had said that it was 30 that didn't complete the program. Do you have any information on why they weren't able to complete it?
So, let me go back to the figures one more time so I can clarify.
The 131 that participated and the 101 that completed? I guess you say the one, the...
So, let me go back. 131 was accepted into the program. 131, they were eligible, they were accepted into the program. But we also found out some other things. People didn't attend because they were on vacation. They didn't tell us that. Or they got jobs, some of them had got jobs. So, the two main factors for that would be from the fallout from the 131, I'm going on vacation with my parents, or I got another job, or just decide to do something else. So, it wasn't like the attrition was, we had 131 people and then 30 didn't show up. They had some reasons. And even with that, we actually accepted people into the program after their vacations. We worked with them as best we can on that. And then, the 31 that we talked about before was actually those that achieved the Career Readiness Certificate.
Thank you.
I say thank you for this first year. I think it was a good effort for what we saw from previous years to bringing it back to the program. My question is, for the ones that are not in high school that are over the age of 18 or have graduated out, what is going to be the mechanism to keep in contact with those individuals throughout the fall, winter, spring? So that way, they either can come back to the program or potentially get a job at one of those centers or sites that they worked at this past summer?
So, we have what we call MyOneFlow. So, we collect a lot of data. So, everyone that applied to the program, we have all their information on them. And we have a team slowly, because we don't have a large staff, that goes back and reconnects with every person in that system. We're starting first with those that were in the program, find out where they're at, where they're going, where their needs. And some of them have come back to us as well. We did have a focus for the 18- to 24 range specifically for that reason, and those that were out of school because they don't have a lot of time to support, like maybe going back to high school, for example. So, they come back to Brooks Crossing for all those different things. We also, when we have events, because they're in our database, we're shooting our information all the time. We have a job fair tomorrow, and they are on that list, for example. So, there is a way for us to do that, and that is really through the coaching pieces of it and the communication. So, we have that in place by which we can communicate with them throughout the entire year. We also have New Horizons, have a presence in our building right now, and they also are doing the same thing. I failed to mention that 77 of our participants also went through OIA eligibility and also Ways of Opportunity Eligibility. So, we have about 30 that are eligible for brated funding. What does that mean? When they did that, that means that those organizations, along with us, has to give them services throughout the year.
Can you track those individuals and make sure we don't lose any of them throughout the rest of the year? Particularly, if they need additional help that's not just in the field of being career-ready, there may be some other needs that they may present themselves. And since we've already found them, if we can just keep contact and make sure they're not lost.
Absolutely. So, we've created at Brooks Crossing what we call Employee Workbook. And the Employee Workbook does that specific thing. The staff that's present are required to follow up with individuals in our system for at least 90 days until they reach outcome.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Are there any firsts or questions at this time? I think we're good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. City Attorney. If I'm zipping through these slides, I'm going to try to make up for some time on the back end.
Let's do five minutes if we could.
Yes, sir. So, I've got to cover about five slides very quickly, Mr. Mayor. Friday Night Nets is a caring community program comprised of city staff and countless community organizations and volunteers. And I will advance the slide if I can get it to work.
Hi, my name's...
There we go, okay. The programmatic goals is to reduce crime via data-driven around time, place, and the who. Basically, it's young people. And best practices framework from ideas from around the country, the best ideas we're able to glean. It's also structured around seven pillars of causational violence. And we also receive input from what we call the ad hoc group. These are folks that are comprised of city staff and a number of community volunteers and experts to help us structure the program and do touchpoints throughout the program year. The further goals is to create safe places, safe spaces for young people. You've probably heard that mentioned many times over the summer. Provide attractive recreational amenities for young people and to connect young people with resources and the services that they need. So, Friday night by the numbers, if you recall, the dates are Friday, May 10th, or were Friday, May 10th through August 23rd. That's 16 consecutive Friday nights. Total programmatic hours, that means the hours you're actually serving the young people, are 80. Total major safety issues, zero. And that includes in the gym, in the facilities, and even on the surrounding property for all 16 Friday Night Nets at both locations. We were also fortunate to receive about 1,000 gun locks for free as a donation to the city. And we distributed about 800 of those gun locks at both locations. That's a value of approximately $10,000. And those are costs that taxpayers of the city didn't have to bear. We distributed free meals, about over 6,600 at both locations, and countless numbers of volunteers involved. Volunteers were also involved with over 350 haircuts at both locations from volunteer city, didn't have to pay for that. So, if you were to equate about $20 per haircut, you're roughly around $10,000 or more. Volunteer organizations, we estimate that we have seen in the gym, just a quick eyeball count, it's over 40 volunteer organizations that have come to the table and have answered the call to help us out with this program. So, it's not all city staff, it's a caring community that comes together. We also have some examples of our volunteers that have, you know, joined us today. We have Catch More Kids, we have Troy Ketchmore. We Catch More Kids, he's here. We have also Ms. Felicia Wilson with Riverside with their Intervention Program for Youth, and we're glad to have them. They have been active, very active volunteers and partners in this effort throughout the entire Friday night and without missing any of the Friday Night Nets. And we certainly appreciate their help. Dwayne Hickman, I thought I saw him here earlier with Quality of Life. He's the executive director. Pretty much headed up the 12- to 17-year-old age group for the Community Support Advocates with his team of a dozen volunteers. So, we're extremely appreciative. And there's so many volunteers, I don't even want to start recognizing because I'm going to leave somebody out and I don't want to offend anybody. But we plan to have some recognition and activity during October if we can go ahead and get the logistics squared away. We're working on that now. Additional volunteer hours, if you just take total gym hours, gym hours during the program time, it would be 4,800 or over 4,800. And that's roughly about $60,000. And these numbers right here give you an idea of what the attendees look like over the 16 consecutive Friday Night Nets. For 12- to 17-year-olds, you can see the figures here, the 18- to 25-year-olds. And the interesting thing is that bottom number is what we call spectators. As the folks that came in and were active players, they brought in people that maybe playing ball isn't their thing, but they enjoy seeing their siblings, their family, their friends. So, what does this mean? All these are all young people that are not on the streets at that time. They're in the gym, they're having fun, they're doing their thing and enjoying themselves. So, total city funds, about $204,000 to support it. And that's pretty much a portion across staffing, contractual services, food, and so forth. We're asked to put in crime stats, and by no means do I want to equate this to Friday Night Nets entirely. I would say to get these kind of numbers, you might want to think of, you know, fighting crime as a toolbag. And Friday Night Nets is probably a big tool that's in the toolbag along with, you know, YCP, along with Thrive, along with all these other crime-fighting programs. So, this gives you an idea, I won't bother to read it, but using some pretty impressive numbers for the two summer seasons, summer of 2023 compared to the summer of 2024, and looking at incidences of homicide and shootings. So, we have gotten a lot of feedback throughout the program, beginning, middle, end. And this is just a word cloud that summarizes a lot of the positive feedback we have. If we had to list it all out, it wouldn't be enough time to get through it. But the number one, the number one comment that we got, are we going to have the program next year? And so, yes. And I've heard that over and over and over. So, there's a lot of built-up excitement now. Expectations have been raised. We know it was the first year, it was a prototype. We came up with some really, really good results. And I was totally impressed with the number of volunteers that have come forward to help make this program a success. So, we're excited about next year's program and looking forward to it. So, with that said, I'll ask Mr. Miller to come forward and close us out.
Do you plan to increase the number for next year?
I'm sorry.
Do you plan to increase the number of participants?
Oh, yes. So, Dr. Woodbury, what we would love to do... is keep it open to any young person that wants to be here. We, we have, there's a place for any young person that wants to come. And with those age groups that you saw there, you know, I, I think we were prepared. If, if more kids wanted to show up, there was always a place for them. And whether they wanted to play ball or whether they wanted to be a spectator, you know, if you think about it, those are kids that are not on the street making bad decisions. So.
Did you get any kind of publicity to the schools before it started?
Yes, we were in contact with the schools. The schools have been a great partner. In fact, they recommended Quality of Life to be the CSA. So those, Quality of Life works in the school system, and they know the young folks from twelve to seventeen. They have a rapport with them. So it made it that much easier to have that linkage and that connect, that connectivity with the Quality of Life staff and the young people there, because they, they're used to seeing them in the schools. So thank you for bringing that up. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. So I was simply gonna say, you've heard a couple updates of our featured programs tonight. As my colleagues have said, I think they were overall success. We've also learned a lot. We're looking to make improvements, not only those programs, but also the larger Youth Thrive initiative. Some of those include enhancing the existing website. We're also doing more in terms of outreach. We'd like to build our partnerships, provide even more great programming, like the examples you heard tonight. And then finally, to reach a larger portion of our communities, particularly our younger residents. We've heard that a mobile app might be something that, that can spread some of the word a little bit further. So those are things that we're looking to do in the near future, improve our program. That'll stand for the rest.
We have, we have time for maybe one question, and we need to really get to the closed session.
All right. But what I'm, did you, how did you do the virtual? What about, did they have resources to be able to do the virtual?
For, Dr. Woodbury, I'm prepared to provide you a whole host of information on that. We will likely follow up with you with a packet of information. I know that's something that we've committed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund year-end report. I know we'll get back on time. Let's do it.
Okay. The, the second presentation this evening is the FY twenty twenty-four general fund year-end report, which offers a snapshot of the city's general fund activity as we wrap up the fiscal year. While some adjustments are still necessary before the external auditors commence their work next month, this report effectively highlights our year-end financial performance. It encompasses the general fund's financial activity for the entire FY twenty twenty-four. Please note that this fourth quarter overview is not the final official report. That will be presented in December alongside the annual comprehensive financial report. Lisa Cipriano, Director of Budget and Evaluation, provided an overview of the preliminary unaudited FY twenty twenty-four report, and I know get us back on schedule, right?
Absolutely. Just to add, good, good evening, City Council and Mr. Manager. Just to give you some perspective and context, this operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four was created two years ago, starting in September of twenty twenty-two. We were still in high pandemic mode. We were in recovery mode. And so this operating budget was built for, one, a recession and, two, high inflationary rates. So what that translates into is we built very conservative revenue estimates. So we would not have to have a mid-year budget operating expense reduction should a recession hit hard during fiscal year twenty twenty-four. As a result, we ended up with approximately twenty-six million dollars more in revenues than we estimated for the fiscal year. This estimate is made, these receipts are made up of several one-time revenues, namely, eight million dollars in interest earnings that we had not budgeted for due to the high Fed interest rates that were sustained during the year. Five million dollars in meals tax receipts that were underestimated on purpose again. About three million dollars in sales tax. Four point one million dollars in personal property tax. Four point five million dollars in delinquent personal property tax. About two million dollars in B-poles and about two million dollars in inmate and juvenile detainee care that we received from the state. So a lot of these revenues have built, been built into the twenty-five operating budget that was adopted by City Council in May. So we are not likely to see this type of surplus in the future. Again, this is a snapshot in time. Finance is completing its work to be prepared for the auditor's review to come in and then develop the final annual financial comprehensive report for you in December. So right now, we are looking at a twenty-six million dollar surplus in the general fund alone.
Dr. Woodbury's gonna go first, and then I'm gonna go second.
Well, I, I am just delighted that we're so rich. But I am not delighted that many of our citizens are not having the benefit of having paid all this in and making us rich. I am very concerned about the fact that I feel that there should be a lowering of the real estate tax. And then for those people who don't pay real estate, who don't own it and will not get any benefit from the lowering of that rate. I would like to see something done with personal property. We reduced that in the past one time from a hundred percent to seventy-five percent. I was even ready to go fifty percent, but I would at least want seventy-five percent. And so I would like to see those issues addressed and some of our citizens getting some of their money back. And that's, you're gonna still be my friend, you said, but.
Yes, Dr. Woodbury.
But I still want our citizens to get some of their money back. It is not right, and I'm, I'm delighted we have a surplus, but we shouldn't have that kind of surplus when people are struggling to go to the grocery stores and to be able to afford what they afford. So those are my.
And, and I'll, I'll echo probably thirty-five percent of that comment. So just wanted to reiterate to council, there's a lot of this of the, was it twenty-two million?
Twenty-six.
Perfect. Of the twenty-six million dollars, there's a lot of one-time things that were unaccounted for, right? So that's eight plus six plus four. We're not gonna see this again. That being said, I think we have been, I think as fiduciary, you know, responsible members of council, I think it's good that we have a surplus. Maybe we can decrease the surplus. I think Councilman Long and Dr. Woodbury had a point last year. I think we could take a look at a few things. I think personal property affects more people than just homeowners. So I know last time, when Councilman Long brought up that point, there was a, a conversation that Commissioner Revenue had already sent it out. So let's look at, let's make sure the timing is accurate and that we can coordinate and see, you know, what are our options with seventy-five percent, fifty percent? Additionally, let's, let's take a look at veteran waiver programs as well as senior citizens. I know a lot of cities have taken a look at a reduction based off of age and service. So not saying we need to do it automatically, but let's just take a look at our options. So next time we do the budget cycle, we can account, we don't need to have, you know, in the negative, in the red, but I think a twenty, over twenty-five billion dollar surplus, we can probably be less conservative and spend more of that on our citizens. Are there any other comments from City Council?
Yeah, I, I did want to say one more thing. Also, I wanted to see something done about the meals tax. I mean, everybody goes out to eat, and we do make a lot of money off of that. And I think we are one of the highest, I think one of the people who used to speak at these meetings, we're one of the highest in the meals tax in the whole area. So I would like to see us reduce that tax too, so that people who do go out are not, you know, spending enormous amounts of money.
Yeah, agreed. We can definitely take a look at, I think there's probably multiple options. We probably can't reduce everything, because I don't want to be a snake that chases its tail, and we up and down, up and down, but there are some reductions. Let's just take a look and see what the options are, whether it's personal property, seniors, veterans. Let's just get a matrix and see what we can do.
Got it. Absolutely.
Anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Still friends.
Back on time, and I love it. Let's do comments, ideas, and suggestions, starting to the left. Councilman Harris.
I'll have your thing, ma'am.
Got it. Vice Mayor.
My bad, I'm usually not this fast, but let me, uh.
I can, I can come back.
Please, come back.
Dr. Woodbury.
I just wanted to talk about, I, um, last month went to the funeral of one of our firefighters. And she was, I believe she was a firefighter. Am I correct in that?
Police officer.
Police officer, I'm sorry. And she was in her thirties and had surgery and it, some, there was a difficulty. And she and her wife had adopted several children, so lots of animals. I mean, her, she was a fantastic person, and I just wanted to lift her up because it was such a moving ceremony. And all the good things that she and her wife had done for this community and for the children and for the animals of the community was just outstanding. So I just wanted to make that reference to that.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll take a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Councilman Long.
I have no comments today.
Got it. Good. Vice.
Yep. Two quick things. One, just wanted to remind council on October third that we have our retreat, joint retreat with EDA. So please make sure that it's on your calendar. And then the last thing is council committees. In the, in the coming weeks, we will have a presentation from Mr. David Freeman along with Alan when he's back. So just wanted to remind everyone that is in motion and coming. So we can go live January first. That's it.
Thank you. Just one thing on my agenda. We only have one fund request, the New Chesapeake Men for Progress Education, the Black Tie Gala. We're only sponsoring it one thousand dollars. The other fund doesn't have enough signatures yet, so we'll talk about that offline. So currently, one thousand dollars for the New Chesapeake Men for Progress Education, Seventh Annual Black Tie Scholarship Gala. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve. So moved. I need a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded at this time. Please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four. I want to make a comment, though.
Okay.
We're getting a lot of, I, I like some reports on these monies that we put out there about how it was spent and what happened with it. And I have asked for this before, because, you know, we're not cash cows that just give out money all willy-nilly. And I, I like reports on what you, how it was used and what the results were.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you. That's all I have. Let's go into closed session.
All right. I move that pursuant to section two point two, tech three, seven, one, one, A of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, subsection one, three, five, seven, and nineteen, that the council hold in close, meaning for the purpose of discussion, consideration, prospective candidates for the city auditor position, a discussion, three, a discussion or consideration disposition of publicly held real property in the central section of the city and the potential disposition of real property in the southern section of the city. Five, a discussion concerning prospective business industry with expansive existing business, business industry where no previous announcements have been made of the business industry interest in located expanded facility in the community and subject, which is a prospective business in the southern section of the city. Seven, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation briefing and meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigate impartial to public body, subject which is probable claims against pharmaceutical manufacturers and pharmacy benefit managers. And nineteen, discussion of reports or plans related to security of any government or facility building structure or safety persons, subject which is reports or plans related to security city hall.
Second.
We need a motion moved and seconded at this time. Please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury. Four. Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carried, five zero. Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman Long.
I move that members of the council serve via that to the best each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting by the council.
Second.
Moved and seconded at this time. Please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carried five zero.
Thank you all. We stand adjourned.